So here we go. So here we're good? Okay, it's gonna be cool. Welcome to the October 24th Board of Education regular meeting. I just want to real quick just say welcome. This is the first time we have had students in our audience since the pandemic. And I have to tell you, it feels good. It feels good. Welcome and thank you for being here. At this time, I will call this meeting to order and Mr. Kavanaugh may leave this floor. Before we start tonight's meeting, we would like to take a moment of silence. Today, Central Visual and Performing Arts High School experienced an unimaginable tragedy. Our hearts go out to the affected families and staff throughout the same public schools. We are mourning with you during this time of grief and loss. Please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda is public comment. And we have one in-person public comment and one comment online that Ms. Heyright will be doing. So at this time, Ms. Lisa Schannenberger?
Schannenberger.
Schannenberger? Thank you. If you just push it up. All right.
Hi, my name is Lisa Schannenberger and I'm a teacher up at the high school and a member of the Kirkwood NEA. I wanted to start by thanking both the members of the school board and the administration team for making this year's professional development focus wellness and a sense of belonging. This is an incredibly important goal and I know it's something that means a lot to my fellow teachers and myself. In talking with my coworkers, I know many of us really enjoyed the first day of PD this year and are really looking forward to the PD day on November 8th. With that goal in mind, the KNEA hopes that the school board will be very reflective about some of our outdated policies that do not achieve these goals for our staff. Many of these policies that I'll discuss are standard in other professions and are also being implemented in many of the nearby school districts. A major goal of the NEA is our hope to establish a meeting where teachers can donate unused sick days for our coworkers to be able to use when they face some of the most difficult and scary times of their life, such as if a loved one or themselves faces a medical emergency. The last thing we want our coworkers to be thinking about is how they're going to pay their bills once their sick days run out. In addition, we would love for teachers to be able to use their own sick days for any event covered under FMLA. Right now, teachers like myself may have enough sick days accumulated from working for the district for, say, eight years for FMLA maternity leave. But we are still forced to take unpaid leave for up to six weeks despite the fact that many nearby districts have policies that allow FMLA to be covered by accumulated sick days. We also hope that the district will continue to value our most experienced teachers by retaining the early separation incentive program without any further cuts and consider paying teachers back for their unused sick days at a higher rate than $15 a day, which is over $100 cheaper than the cost of a substitute for such a day. Most importantly, we hope that the district and the board continues to include authentic teacher input before any decisions and policies are made. This is absolutely essential for teachers to feel included and valued. We hope that the board and the district continue to be the teachers' union as an ally and ensuring that the school district remains a top district in the state and a destination district for teachers to work at with updated policies and procedures that truly reflect the Kirkwoods' commitment to creating a sense of wellness and belonging for its staff and for its students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Heyright?
I have one comment and it's from Andrew McCroy. Dear school board, I come before you as a parent of two kids in Kirkwood to raise a concern that I have regarding Kirkwood School in general and Tillman specifically. Why are families pulling kids out of Kirkwood Public Schools, which is a highly ranked school district, and sending them to other schools? I know of at least five different families that have pulled out one or more children from KPS after attending Tillman. I recognize that this is an intensely personal decision for each family. Nonetheless, it points out that families feel their children are not getting their needs met at the school their child/children currently attend. Based on my experience and similar experiences of other parents at Tillman, I feel the issue boils down to a passive-aggressive form of leadership. The general leadership culture at Tillman is everyone is equal and if everyone pulls together, then everything will be fine, aka no change is needed. This culture becomes a challenge when constructive change is needed because this culture does not encourage correcting behavior. It fosters an environment that maintains the status quo and that sidelines people who raise questions about the culture of the community. Sometimes leadership requires doing the unpopular, altruistic thing of correcting behavior of a few people for the benefit of the group. Therefore, I call upon the school board and staff to look carefully into the culture of Tillman to determine if the present leadership can embrace improving upon its weaknesses or if a leadership change is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heyright. And the board does not respond to public comment, but the superintendent and his team or the board president will be in touch with everyone who made comments. Okay, next item, I need a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the August, or October 24th, 2022 meeting as presented.
So move.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, next up is awards and honors. Ms. Stop, teacher.
So this evening's awards and honors report includes a lot of details of some great accomplishments throughout our district. So if you haven't already, the report is on the board docs. Please take a moment to review the details about the recent pinkout at Kirkwood High School, the outstanding accomplishments of some of our student musicians, and the hard work for staff. But here tonight, we are joined by 11 outstanding seniors recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program. We are also joined by many members of their families and their grade level principal, Dr. Mike Evans. As I call your name, please stand. Tonight, we are recognizing Kirkwood High School seniors Leah Broll, Benjamin Lowry, Charlotte Score, Will Shark, and Max Wellman. These young men and women were named in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. They are among 16,000 semifinalists announced nationwide. These five students are among the 309 national merit semifinalists from the state of Missouri this year. The pool of semifinalists represents less than 1% of all U.S. high school seniors. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 7,250 national merit scholarships worth nearly $28 million that will be offered next spring. To be considered for a merit scholarship award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition. About 95% of the semifinalists are expected to attain finalist standing and approximately half of the finalists will win National Merit Scholarship, earning the Merit Scholar title. You may be seated. Now, our next group, be ready. We are also recognizing Kirkwood High School seniors Cece Barton, Anya Broll, Ayla Berba, Jane DeBurki, Bennett Briggs, and Madeline Whitehall. They were named National Merit Commended Students in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. They are among some 34,000 commended students throughout the nation being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2023 competition for National Merit Scholarship awards, commended students placed among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2023 competition by taking the 2021 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. At this time, we invite Leah, Benjamin, Charlotte, Will, Max, Cece, Anya, Ayla, Jane, Bennett, and Madeline to come forward and take a photo. Afterwards, please follow me outside for an additional photo.
How to find a window, is that what?
Yeah, we're gonna find a window. Come on in. All right. So Cece, can you follow that side? Does your dad want to look in that way? Perfect. Obvious.
You all can stand up.
Well, hold on, you guys can stand up. I'm more behind the table. Ms. Andrews, sorry, can I have you? All right, right here in three, two, one. Mr. Kavanaugh, sorry. In three, two, one. You can either walk on this stage or you can follow me this way. We'll take you so I can go out the front or you can come back and walk.
Yep, and before you all leave, I just want to say on behalf of the board, congratulations. You know, as I said, this is the first time we've had students since the pandemic. It's also, you know, amazing to think that you all achieved this during a pandemic. And so you all need to be extremely proud of yourselves because we are really proud of you. And parents and supporters that are out there, thank you because this kind of stuff takes a village. It takes support from everyone. And so you all need to thank your parents tonight and just keep up the hard work. We are proud that you all are pioneers. Keep up the great work. Now, at this time, Mrs. Diedrich would like you all to follow her. And parents, you can also follow if you want to get pictures. Thank you all so much. And you're also welcome to come back.
Yeah, we find that this is the third child.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Kavanaugh. Okay, next up is 4.01, the district audit report. Dr. Aldrich?
All right, thank you very much, President Andrews. And I'm going to toss it over to Mike Romei to introduce our guest and go through our audit presentation this evening.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce Ms. Jamie DeBori from our auditing firm, Shawalter &amp; DeBori. Before she gets started, I'd just like to thank her and her team for a successful audit. Also, wanted to thank the finance department and in particular Scott Harmon for all their hard work. So I'll turn it over to Jamie. Jamie, you have the clicker there.
Do you want us to remove the podium? Would you like to sit?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, unless you guys have your billables.
No, whatever you. You're good, you're good.
Forty-eight pages. I told mine I was going to spend one minute per page. And I thought, okay, I'll keep a little bit more concise.
I mean, why does he cut you off?
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay? Do you want me to talk?
I do need to do the topic because we are live streaming this and so in order for our public online to hear you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Board President, Ms. Andrews, Superintendent O'Rourke, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you very much for having me this evening. I'd like to just start out by letting you know that besides trying to keep it concise tonight, I'm going to be focusing on the financial statements at a very high level, providing some summary discussions of the results, talk to you a little bit about some changes in the financial statement opinion so you can hear it from us first, and some hot topics, because who doesn't want to hear about auditing hot topics at seven o'clock on Monday evening? The first thing I'd like to just remind the board is that we are independent auditors and we are hired by the board to do an independent audit of management for the board. Okay, so of course, we appreciate Mike and everything that his team does to help us, but we are engaged in fact by the board for an independent audit. All right, so I believe you've received the financial statements before this evening, so I will just go over a couple highlighted, highlight a couple of items for you. So page one of the financial statements, you'll see that there's, it looks new. There is a new standard we had to implement regarding the opinion. We performed an audit of the district's financial statements for the year ended June 30th of 2022. Our responsibility as the auditors is to plan and to perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, okay? So we're not auditing every transaction, and Mike and his team would not like us to audit every transaction. I promise you, we would be here forever. On page one, you'll find the independent auditor's report. It's the first paragraph under opinion. So in our opinion, like I said, the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects and it's on the modified cash basis of accounting. Please note that in the current year, like I said, the report, independent auditor's report changed. There are some additional clarity, so we have the basis for opinion in there. It talks about the fact that there's ethical requirements related to our audit. There's, it talks about audit evidence that we need to get. We have emphasis of matter regarding the modified cash basis of accounting, which is different from accrual. And we also have emphasis of matter on the change in accounting principle, and that's related to GASV-87 related to how leases are recorded. So I'll talk about that in a minute. I'd like to go over a couple, actually, let me stop there, and do you guys have any questions about the opinion letter itself?
Okay, let's see, let's roll.
Great. With regard to some financial highlights, I would like you to look at page six of the financial statements. It's the balance sheet on the modified cash basis. You'll see there that for the year ended June 30th, 2022, the district ended the year with total governmental fund balance of approximately a hundred and twelve million, okay? It's under total fund balances and the total governmental funds. It's a decrease of approximately two point six million from 2021. In the operating funds, and those are the general and special revenue funds combined, you'll see that the total fund balance was approximately forty-seven million. And of that amount, approximately thirty-four point five million is unassigned or unreserved. And the reason why that's important is because it represents about forty-one percent of your 2022 expenditures in those funds. So you guys have a sense for what's assigned, which has to go to something designated versus what's unassigned and can be used for other expenses. So the remainder of that, so thirty-four point five is unassigned. The remainder is restricted or committed and has to be used for something specific. Again, that's on page six. I just want to reiterate that this is all on the cash basis of accounting, so the balance sheet is just cash. The financial conditions of the district would be significantly different if the accrual basis of accounting was used, and that's included in our emphasis, in our opinion as well. Okay. All right, COVID has not gone away, whether we like it or not, right? So we are just going to give you an update. In 2020 and 2021, we had to put an emphasis of matter in the opinion. So in 2022, we took out that emphasis of matter from the opinion, but just the fact that COVID is still going on is included in the footnotes. And it's in footnote nine, which is on page 23, if you'd like to look at it. That we are required as auditors to evaluate the district's ability to continue to operate for one more year past the June 30, 2022 balance sheet date. And our procedures included conducting discussions with management and producing, you know, looking at some audit evidence. So you guys are good to go for another year, and that's what it says in the footnote nine. I'd like to talk a little bit now to have you guys look at page forty-five and forty-six of the financial statements. We're going to talk about some of the federal stuff. That's a technical term, in case you haven't heard that before, federal stuff. So in the prior years, there was a lot of funding related to COVID. So it was primarily the Education Stabilization Fund, which is ESSAR, and the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And the district was required to have a single audit in 2021. In 2022, they're still trailing expenditures, okay? So ESSAR, they were much less. In the current year, it's about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars compared to the prior year, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. You can see it's not as much. But there was a new program you guys had this year called Emergency Connectivity Fund, and that was approximately nine hundred and eighty-three thou, well, it wasn't approximately, it was nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, okay? So it was almost a million dollars. And that was expended during the current year under audit. So in total, the district had one point two five million in COVID-19-related funding that was expended during the current fiscal year. And that's all laid out for you on page forty-five and forty-six of the financial statements. Okay, so this slide just goes over what we talked about, single audit. So one point two five million, so we're required to do a single audit because you had so much federal grants. And then we also are required as auditors to perform certain procedures over state compliance, and we completed those procedures and completed the necessary reporting. As I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, we're hired by the board, and as such, we issue a report to the board. And there's a separate report that was issued as part of the audit. It's called the Report to the Board because auditors are pretty creative in our titling of reports. I do have to go over a couple of matters with you, so just to highlight, to highlight the discussion. Management is responsible for the selection and use of accounting policies. They are designated in footnote one of the financial statements. The district was required to adopt GASV-87, that's when I talked about leases. So it didn't affect the balance sheet itself, but it's affected the disclosures in the financial statements. We did not encounter any difficulties in dealing with management during our audit procedures, so that would be something you would want to know about. There were no uncorrected misstatements. There were no disagreements with management. Management did provide us representations in relation to the audit, so everything that we talked about was represented. We're not aware of any consultations that management had with other independent accounting firms during the course of the audit, so everything we talked about was with our firm. And although we have a lot of discussions with management, we talk about, you know, how things are going throughout the year, we're not aware that any of those affected are in relation to our retention as auditors. So they weren't opinion shopping. They were coming to us to get some advice and to make sure we're all on the same page. I don't know if there's any questions about GASV-87 regarding leases. If there's not, it's kind of a technical question, so I'm happy to skip that part unless anybody has a question. Are there any questions on the reports to the board? And what would an evening be without some hot topics, so let's do that. GASV-87 is all about leases. What's coming up next is subscription-based information technology and how that has to be accounted for. And if you were accrual basis, there would be some work we would have to do in that area. So we expect that there will be disclosures. Again, we'll have to disclose some information in the footnotes, but it won't affect the actual face of the financial statements. There are some other new pronouncements. There's omnibus, and there's some requirements regarding compensated absences. But again, it's all related to accrual school districts, so I don't, we don't expect that it's going to impact Kirkwood School District. I would just like, again, to thank Mike and his team. It takes a lot of work. I know there's, what did I say? It's about forty-eight pages. I mean, the audit takes weeks to get done, and Mike and his team spend more time than we spend auditing. So you might not see all the papers that go behind the forty-eight-page, you know, audit, you know, the financial statements themselves, but it takes a lot to get everything coordinated, and we really appreciate Mike's professionalism and his team's professionalism and our collaboration together to have another successful audit, so thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, at this time, we would just like to thank you again, and thank Mr. Wellman and his team. Great, great to have you again, and he moved you to the top so you didn't have to sit through a whole meeting.
I really, I really appreciate that. My thirteen-year-old son does as well. He has no more Xbox tonight. Mom's coming home, so you all understand that. So thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay. So next up is 4.02, enrollment, and Dr. Aldrich.
Thank you very much again, President Andrews. Dr. Bailey will join us. If you recall, Board of Education, we do, in October, every year, we go from our September meeting where we end the cycle of Dr. Fields bringing us the class size report, and we move into now our report on the, our report on the enrollment report as we have closed the month of September. Dr. Bailey?
I'm a bigger block than that. I didn't turn the mic on when I sat down on purpose. Good evening, I'm glad to present, or glad to present the enrollment report to the Board of Education this evening. There are lots and lots of numbers in there, and I was told to read every single one of them. I'm just kidding. Just some trends that we can go over regarding enrollment. Our resident enrollment again increased by thirty-six students over last year. You can see non-resident enrollment, which in this case is our students participating in the VIC program. We no longer have any students from Riverview Gardens or from the, gosh, I lost the name of the district. Normity, thank you, under credit. So we no longer have any students there, so any non-residents strictly are students that participate in the VIC program. Over the last ten years, enrollment has increased by two hundred and sixty-nine students. This year, resident enrollment accounts for ninety-nine point three percent. Total enrollment has increased since 2011, twelve, by seven hundred and forty-four students, and our enrollment did increase by sixteen students over last year. So you can see that the trend is going up. We're at fifty-eight seventy-six for this current school year. You can see the years, every year, we've gone up. We did have one blip in 2019, twenty, where we went down for the following year, but we are back up and surpassed that number this school year. Our resident enrollment, please note this does include our current employee students. This just does not include our students in the VIC program. Resident enrollment continues to rise every year as well. Here you can see a quick breakdown of our enrollment. You can see that we have fifty-eight thirty-two in terms of resident. Non-resident numbers are there as well. ELL population is the highest that has been quite some time, seventy-five students. I remember just four years ago when I started, it was fifty-two. And so that number has continued to increase. One thing that we have noted that will probably continue to increase in the next couple of years is a bit of a rebound for our students identified with special needs. We had a bit of a lull in the last couple of years with COVID, that we didn't have the numbers that we typically have. Not that it's a bad thing to have a lower number of students with IEPs, but we are seeing more testing being conducted during that time as well. We do still see a slight decrease in our overall free reduced lunch, but we are working with our social workers to ensure that every family that should be qualifying for that is filling out paperwork. Again, that is something that hasn't had to happen in the last couple of years. This is the first year since about 2020 that families had to reapply, resubmit paperwork for free reduced lunch. And some of them are just not, not used to that. So we're working with our social workers to ensure that everybody that should be receiving that receives that. Here we have a breakdown on race and ethnicity. You can see on the right, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different categories. The number of students around the left, you can see percentage of breakdown on the right. And just comparing those to previous years, Asian percentage is up slightly. Our African-American percentage is the same as it was last year. Hispanic, slightly up. Our multiracial group continues to be our fastest-growing group percentage-wise, and our overall white percentage is actually down. Last year was seventy-nine point five, oh-five, and this year seventy-eight point three. The number's a little bit hard to see on the enrollment. What you see is by grade level across the columns, and then going up and down, you can see by building. Totals are on the bottom, totals are on the far right. You can see what last year's enrollment was for each of those grade levels. And then you can see what was projected by Dr. Coffrin's projections. And again, that's the mid-series projection from the report that he submitted last year by grade level. And you can see that in almost every one of those, for this particular area, we're above where those projections would be. Secondary enrollment, again, you can see that the columns are by building, and you can see that the rows are by grade level. You can see there are sixth-grade enrollment. He was pretty spot-on, four thirty-two, projected four thirty-three. I don't know that he can get much better with that number. You can see a couple of others that are above the projections. High school has four cla, three classes that are above those projections. I do like to make a special note about the freshman class. That is a class that's been smaller in nature since they've been in kindergarten. We've been tracking that group all the way through, and so that one is a little outlier for us, but that class has been smaller as they've gone through our system. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on these. You guys can go back and look, but each of these slides would show a grade level, would show R is resident, NR would be non-resident. You can see ELL, students who qualify for special education, G is gifted, and free reduced lunch. You can see each of these slides, and then a race ethnicity breakdown on the bottom for you to see for each of these. So Kirkwood High School, Knifer, North Middle, Kaiser. We did have extra grade levels. That's why the free reduced lunch is kind of dangling down there at the bottom. North Lendale, Robinson. And just as a reminder, Robinson is our only building that qualifies for Title I services. You can see their free reduced lunch percentage is fifteen point four. That's actually a little bit lower than we've had in some past years when we had more frequency applying for free reduced lunch status. Again, our social workers are working. Robinson this year, when we added a second counselor to each elementary building, because Robinson already had two counselors due to their title status, we actually were able to add a dedicated social worker, and she's been working with families to ensure that we're getting the applications we're supposed to have. Then you can see Tillman and Westchester. So each of those breakdowns, you can go through and take a look at. We have the same with KCC. We do like to point out enrollment at KCC, it's been around three hundred the last several years. I do point out that there are seventy students that currently receive special education services there. That is because a lot of students that are coming in, age just three, four, and five, qualify for what's called young child developmental disability, and we keep the track of that because those students do often matriculate up into our buildings as well. So that percentage may seem high, but that is because they purposely have an early childhood special ed program that encapsulates those services. We do like to make sure that we highlight some of the non-resident VIC enrollment. You can see that at one point, there was four hundred and eighty students participating in the VIC program in the Kirkwood School District. Currently, that number is at forty-four. I do want to emphasize that is not anything that Kirkwood has done regarding that enrollment. VIC, the program itself, is being closed out. I don't know if you shared the news, Rob, by the way, regarding VIC. I'll get to that at the end. It's not about the program itself, but somebody involved in the program. We do no longer accept new VIC students. That, again, is not a Kirkwood decision. That is a VIC decision. It's been assigned. This past school year, we were only assigned one slot for the VIC program, and that one slot did go to a student who's related to a current student. Current enrollment is approximately eighty-two percent of our VIC students are at the middle school or high school. And of that, fifty-three percent are at the high school. And even in that group, seventy percent, a lot of numbers are seventy percent, are either juniors or seniors, essentially a large chunk. In the next couple of years, we'll graduate out, and that number will continue to decrease, so. You can see that trends, again, trending downward. And again, to emphasize, this is what is allotted to us. Each district gets a certain number of slots through VIC. This is not a choice that Kirkwood made, but the program itself is, is, is closing out. And those students that are coming in, it was reported to me last Friday that it's, in the next couple of years, there will be no new enrollments being taken in through the VIC program, even if they are relatives of other students, so. We do like to point out again the non-resident employee enrollment that we have. You can see a breakdown by each building. Just in comparison, last year, we had one hundred and fifty-six, so we're just one off of that particular number that we had last year. That is one of the benefits that we have within our policy. The board does allow that. I also want to emphasize that when we are placing students, we do not place an employee child in a grade level that would cause the opening of another section. So if we were right at the precipice, we will either say no, or we will wait until that enrollment stabilizes out prior to making any decisions. We have told employees, no. We have told employees no on their request to place a specific building. Just to give you an example, Westchester with its huge second-grade class, there were employees that were told no based on the size of that class. So it is, again, something that we're very common to develop when we're placing students. Do like to show the resident enrollment comparison. You can see, again, the buildings across, across the rows. And then up and down, you can see the specific years. You can see that we looked at the mid-series projections and the five-year projection. I do want to point out, the high school, Dr. Coughlin nailed that one pretty, pretty good there. But you can see the actual enrollment for each of the past two years, and then you can see the projections that were there. Again, do want to point out, some schools, like Kaiser, significantly higher, but most of the schools are right close to or a tick above where that is at. You can see at the end of the time, the projected mid-series and five-year for our enrollment is, you're actually higher than what was projected. Something new that we added this year in response to some questions that we had, we included some transfer data. This will also be reviewed when we go over the next presentation about family exit survey. But this is a breakdown of who's transferring out, who's transferring in. You can see that we did have a significant number of students transferring into the district, especially from out-of-state private school, a plus 59 on that area. I do want to point out that some of the in-state transfer-out students are actually due to a full-time enrollment in the Missouri course program, the MOCAP program. So students that wanted to go full-time in an online virtual setting that's not launch would technically transfer to the district that houses that program. So there's a program called MOVA that is down in Grandview, so the student technically transfers to Grandview to participate in that program. So there's probably four or five students that are, that are in that in-state public transfer-out that technically still live in Kirkwood, but are, are because of the MOCAP rules, are transferred out. Here, we focus specifically on private school transfer data. You can see that the transfer out, we wanted to know where are they transferring out, what grade level? Not to anybody's surprise, you can see that there's a larger number of the transfer after fifth grade, so they plan to go into a private school at the middle school level and after eighth grade, meaning they plan to go to a private high school. You can see the different grade levels that are present there with different transfers. And the breakdown is there. Typically, we have more transferring in when it comes to across the board, but those big points at fifth grade and eighth grade do sway that data, I think. This is just a show of in-state private school transfer-out. We focused on this because the assumption is that they still live in Kirkwood and they're choosing to go to a private school. You can see this school year is not any different than the past couple of years and commensurate with previous years as well. And I do want to point out that the overall transfer-out is actually the lowest it's been since 2017, '18, with 256 students transferring out. That is lower than the previous years that you can see. And I will take any questions.
I just want to stay up there. Next up, 4.03, family exit survey.
I do want to point out that I noticed that two slides are repeated in here. The data is not different, but that was my mistake. So we'll see them, they're the charts, and so they got repeated and out of order. So I'm going to blame my five-year-old on that one because she's not here to defend herself. So we did ask, she's probably watching, sorry. We did ask for families that have transferred out this past school year or the prior school year, we submitted an exit survey for families to fill out. We pulled different examples from various school districts and compiled the questions.
Unplug it.
Can't do it.
Unplug it and unplug.
We'll try that. All, all that, okay. So you can see that we've gone over the response to different rating scales previously on these areas. Don't have to read them to you, but you guys saw the charts that we presented in a previous meeting. These are the areas that they were asked to rate on a one-to-five scale. There were also three questions that people could respond to. Those three questions, how would you describe Kirkwood School District to a friend or neighbor? Please give us specific suggestions as to how we can improve? And is there any additional information you would like to share with us? Some people did not share anything, they just did a rating. Some people shared a lot of information. I do want to note that those answers are anonymous, and if we shared anything with our administrators, I removed any identifying information that could be gleaned from some of those comments because some did state their child's name or state a specific picture or something to that effect. So stand back. So again, a quick summary, the transfer to private school numbers are higher for the past three years and prior years, but this year, no different or commensurate with the last couple of years. We do have a lower number of total transfers out. Our enrollment is continuing to increase. Not all of the feedback was negative. We had lots and lots of people provide positive comments, comments that were, we, we planned to go to beyond, for example, this is nothing to do with Kirkwood School District, or we moved, or some other things that came up. So some of the comments that we received were, were positive. This is the first year that we've given this survey, so we gave it again to the previous school year and the school year prior to that. Just to, so you guys know, response numbers, we had 67 respond to who left after 2021 and 77 respond to who left after 2022. Again, you saw these numbers before, don't need to go over, but the transfer-in, transfer-out comparisons. Now, this is one of the repeat slides. So again, total transfers out, the list that we have. And in-state private school transfer-out, you can see again, commensurate. So pay no attention to the next two slides as we skip through. So some feedback summary, looking at all the different comments that we received, kind of grouped those into these major areas, communication, curriculum, discipline, bullying, special education, technology, and then kind of a potpourri of other areas, which would include DEI, library books, inclusion, and any other comments that couldn't necessarily be grouped into one of those. I will say some comments had to be broken into multiple areas that they could go under because they might have contained just a lot of information. I'm not going to read through all these components, but what you can see here, just kind of a summary of the different things under the communication strand. And I did give you an example of a comment that was placed regarding somebody's enrollment. You can see, again, the communication side. I will point out that for the most part, parents wanted more transparency, more direct communication, and often would state that I could get a phone call rather than an email. The mode of communication came up quite a few times as well. Curriculum, there are a lot of different points that are there, but some folks with curriculum felt like their child didn't get individualized support, wanted a little bit more tier-two resources. Mentioned having a standardized curriculum across elementary schools. There were some parents of twins that reported that they felt like twins in different classrooms were seeing different curricular pieces. And again, an example, comment down below. Under discipline and bullying, many parents reported that their child faced bullying or cyberbullying, which tends to be more prevalent these days than, than in-person. They reported the discipline systems, in their words, are, quote, "too relaxed," and that students are allowed to be repeat offenders. Not all parents were on board with restorative practices. Room clears, student discipline issues impacted other student learning. And then you can see a parent comment that was placed regarding the classroom disruptions. Special education was another area that even though not a lot of people may have experienced that, they had strong comments regarding special education specifically. They felt like the IEP was not being implemented. They felt like there was a disconnect between SSD and Kirkwood Services. More specifically, they felt like the Kirkwood Services, meaning Kirkwood paid employees, provided better services than some of the special education teachers. The room location, if you don't know what ALC is, it's Alternative Learning Curriculum. It's for students that require a different level of curricular activity. And the room placement made some parents upset, and staff and admin turnover was a concern. No, it's not me. The auditor didn't have to deal with this. And then you can see that there, the admin and staff turnover was a concern, and you can see in the comments there as well regarding staff turnover. In case you don't know, SSD coordinator is the administrator of a special education program. We've got three coordinators and one director that are assigned to our different buildings. Technology was another area. Many parents in regards to technology felt like it was introduced at too young of an age. They felt like kindergarten or first grade was too early for some students. Some complaints with how online learning was handled regarding lesson plans, lesson design. Interestingly enough, having been a high school principal, this surprised me a little, phone access, at next report, some parents felt like students should not have access to their own phones during class, that it created wide disruption. Other parents felt like phone access was paramount to safety and communication, and why would you ever not provide, you know, Wi-Fi or access to our students in that respect? And then just other issues, these are lumped areas in there, concerns about library books, inclusion, DEI, and perceptions about political leanings. Additional areas of comment included offering more acceleration and extension options, smaller class sizes, and correcting the tone and split. And then you can see one of the examples, and this is an example of a comment that would be under different areas just because it has multiple things covered. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thanks, Dr. Bailey, for your presentation. Appreciate it. I just wanted to confirm, you said what your response rate was? It was 67 or 77? Is that up to 256?
Yeah, so the, anybody that transferred out at the end of 2021 was given one survey because I wanted to make sure we didn't confound the data. And then we had 67 responses for that particular survey. And I can get you the transfer number there. Out of 428 transfers, and then at the end of the 2022 school year, 77, I apologize, out of 340 transfers for the 67 responses, and 77 responses out of 256 transfers.
Okay, thank you. So we didn't show a significant entry, increase in transfers based on your report?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I do want to say that some of those, we might show 256 transfers, but that might be three students from one family, and they completed one survey. So we didn't do one for each student.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Bailey. Just curious as to what is the district doing with this information? So the feedback, how are we using it to make informed decisions in future?
So we've shared the information with our principals to review. We lumped this into those, the same areas that you saw this evening. We shared some of the same example quotes. We're reviewing different things. If there's an area, like one example on here was that somebody waited four weeks before they got a return regarding an enrollment. If there's something we can target specifically without giving away who may have submitted that, we will be talking to those principals and administrators about, here's something that is specific to your building that we didn't see a pattern across, working through, and then looking at different avenues for communication. And again, looking at our strategic plan D's, a lot of this falls back on some belonging and sense of belonging and communication goals. And you can see those throughout our strategic plan as well.
So like specifically, specifically dealing with bullying, because I've heard that a lot.
Yeah, so some of the things we've already taken, and Dr. Mapp has participated in this as well, we've done a lot of other restorative practice training for our TAs, for some of the teachers annually. Annually, we provide our nonviolent crisis intervention training that we do. We did at the beginning of the year at our retreat restorative practice training for all of our administrators, again, looking at what opportunities we have to not just work with students who might be repeat offenders on what be categorized as bullying, but how we can work to repair or restore that harm between two students because it comes down to communication issues. So refreshing that training for all our administrators and then using our SEL coaches to reinforce that in the buildings.
I'm just going to ask what, as Sharon asked, but I want to go back. You said you were going to tell us something about the BIC.
I'm sorry, Dave, do you want to?
Yes, as for the board and for Dr. Bailey, what he had mentioned, the CEO of the BIC program, David Glazer, passed away suddenly on, on Saturday in a bicycling accident. And so that was what Dr. Bailey was referring to. And as a member of the BIC board, I'll be attending a meeting on Wednesday morning for next steps in terms of the program.
Thanks, Dr. Bailey. Okay, next up, I need a motion in a second to approve the present agenda items, 5.02 through 5.16 as presented.
So moved.
Second. All those are, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next up, I need a motion in a second to approve the financial report for September 2022.
So moved.
Mr. Romey.
Thank you. Our operating revenues for September were 1.5 million. Most of that was to length of taxes, Prop seed revenue, financial institutions tax, and state revenue. We spent $6.7 million during September, most of that being salaries and benefits. In our maintenance fund, we made the second of five lease payments for the 2020 oil project. Those lease payments pulled $351,900. In our technology fund, as you had heard previously, and Mr. Roy said, we were awarded an emergency connectivity fund grant for a total of $940,000 to purchase laptops. We made that purchase in the spring. We just received those funds in September. In our Popeye Fund, we spent about $132,000 on interest on the 2013 and 14 leasehold revenue bonds. In our debt service fund, we paid $848,000 in interest on Prop Bar bonds, $47,000 in interest on 2010 bonds. And in our construction fund, we spent roughly $1.3 million on Prop Bar projects.
At this time, are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving financial statements for September 2022, please raise your right hand and say aye. For those opposed, motion passes. Next up, I need a motion in a second to approve insurance plan changes and premium contribution rates as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Dr. Albrecht?
All right, thank you very much again, President Andrews. Each year at this time, if the board will recall in October, we bring forward the insurance rates for the next calendar year, again, for the board and for the public's knowledge. We do a, benefits is on a calendar year, January 1st through December 31st each year, not on a regular fiscal year. So each year at this time in October, we bring up the insurance rates to the board. And as we prepare for open enrollment, the, the fact is nationally, the cost for medical plans are increasing, and that reality is affecting us this year. So we do have an increase in our insurance premiums that we are, that we are bringing to the Board of Education for approval this evening. And so, Mr. Romey, I don't know what you would like to add with regard to that in terms of details for the Board of Education before I wrap it up with my recommendations.
Yes.
The increase for the medical plan is 6.6%. So there's other plans that we're bringing to the board tonight as well, dental, vision, and life. Dental is 4.9%. Vision and life, we're under contract with those two premiums, and there's no increase for that. So those percentage increases is for the individual, but also for any family members. And any coverage for family members is paid by the employee.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Romey. And it has been our practice for the PPO, the individual PPO, that the district does cover that insurance premium. With regard to all of the other things that Mike just mentioned, excuse me, Mr. Romey just mentioned, we have typically passed those costs along to our employees. So an example would be, for me, I, I still cover my daughter as part of our family, as part of our family insurance. That will see an increase. That increase will be passed on to our employees, including me, on beginning of January 1st. With regard to the PPO plan, the individual plan, it is my recommendation that from January through the employee's new paycheck in fiscal year '24, that KSD and the board would cover the $40 a month increase for all staff members electing to enroll in the PPO for the 2023 calendar year. Any potential impact for 2024? Any potential impact for two-thousand-and-twenty-four will then be part of the salary committee deliberations beginning in December of this year for fiscal year twenty-four. And the board may have a question about whether or not, you know, how, why hasn't this been part of the salary committee's deliberations in the recent past? The fact is, we have not seen increases in that for the last six years. And so it has been a moot point to take to the salary committee. But there is a history of the salary committee entering into these conversations with the district to find an agreement regarding, regarding this moving forward. So again, I just want to thank the board for that, that consideration to not have an impact for our individual PPO holders in our insurance in January and truly turning that over to the, the committee, the salary committee that does have teacher voices that will, that will have a say with regard to what the impact will be going into the twenty-four, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Ms. Andrews?
Okay, at this time, are there any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the insurance plan changes and premium contribution rates as presented, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, next up, three, or six-point-oh-three, I need a motion in a second to request approval to see bids for artificial turfing for Kirkwood High School fields as presented.
Some move.
Second. Okay, Dr. Alrick?
All right, thank you very much once again. I have brought forward for recommendation for approval to the board. If you'll recall, I believe it was at our August board meeting that we had parents visit us during parent comments, excuse me, during public comments and asking about and advocating for the adding of turf at our high school facilities, specifically the upper fields closer to the Essex entrance to the high school. And then on the same footprint would be softball or baseball. And to their credit, what they, what they brought was an opportunity, any opportunity that they'd be willing to investigate to partner with the school district to make that happen. And in a subsequent meeting with, with President Andrews and myself, we met with a couple of those, with those parents and the district. And what they were asking for was the idea of what is that number? What would the number be for the district to improve these facilities with turf? And then included in that was how can we partner with the district to make that happen? And so as we went, had that meeting, Ms. Andrews and I did agree that that was a reasonable request from our, from our community members, from our parents to ask. And for us to get that number, we need to do that in a transparent and open way. And to do that, we would need to issue an RFP to see how much that would cost. And so that's what we're bringing here to you this evening. I want to make sure I say to the board and to the community as always, this does not mean that we are automatically going to make this happen and it doesn't mean, doesn't mean that it won't happen. I think what it does is it's a testament to the Board of Education and their willingness to engage with the community partners to make our facilities better for our students, in this case, our student athletes that participate in extracurricular activities. So, Ms. Andrews?
Okay. At this time, board, if you have any questions or comments, we'll start over.
Thank you. I just have clarification. So this evening, we're only going on whether or not to get a proposal and what it would cost to do the turf. So as you present that information to us, we know there's other factors as well. And to make the best decisions, we appreciate you looking at also the maintenance and upkeep in comparison to our current grass fields. And then also, there are always concerns about what's best for student athletes as well. So I just wanted to state that as well to, when you bring it back to us, this is just the financial version, the number of what it would cost. But that's not our only consideration in making a decision for turf. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's our last meeting here. It's all the gremlins coming to life at one night.
Okay. Seeing no further discussions, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the request, our request to see bids for artificial turfing for the Kirkwood High School fields as presented, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next on, next up. I need a motion in a second to approve entering into a cooperation agreement with St. Louis County Board of Election Commission to conduct candidate filing as presented. I need a motion in a second.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Alrick?
All right, thank you again. So just as a little background information, in June of two-thousand-and-twenty-one, Governor Mike Parson signed House Bill two-seventy-one into law. As part of that law, he amended RISMO, like that, Ms. Dietrich, you taught me how to, how to, how they say that at the capital. RISMO one-fifteen-point-one-two-seven, which changes the dates for candidate filing in local elections. The opening date for filing is now the seventeenth Tuesday prior to the election, in this case, December sixth. The closing date for filing is now the fourteenth Tuesday prior to the election, which is December twenty-seventh, two-thousand-and-twenty-two, which of course falls during the district's winter break. The cooperation agreement that we're bringing to you with the St. Louis County Board of Election Commissioners will support candidates in completing filing at the Board of Elections office for this election cycle. We are requesting approval of the cooperative agreement issued as a resolution authorizing the agreement between St. Louis County Board of Election Commissioners and the district.
Okay. Discussion, of course. Yeah, so are there any questions?
I don't understand really, are we voting on anything or just accepting it or?
No, I mean, right, and it's, you don't have to accept this. So this is being offered?
There's a lot in there, so.
Did you want to call list the key points to this, Dr. Alrick?
I'm looking at Ms. Heidenreich as well. In terms of the key points, essentially, what we would be doing is entering into this agreement with the St. Louis County Board of Elections to conduct the board filing for us. And so they would do that not here or at the Turner Building now. They would not do that here on campus. They would do that at the St. Louis County Board of Elections. And it would be, then the St. Louis County Board of Elections would be responsible for determining the order of the candidates as they filed. And it would, really, the new law has pulled that so far forward in terms of the closings, now over the holiday break. And as recently as last year, what that did was that caused employees, including Ms. Heidenreich and I believe Mr. Scott or either one of our SROs, was there as well to disrupt that holiday for Ms. Heidenreich. And so that was not the case previously. And so what this would do is would allow that, the St. Louis County Board of Elections to essentially run the board candidate filing piece. It does not, would not prevent us from doing the board candidate forum like we did last year. It certainly would not prevent me from meeting with prospective candidates as I've done in the, in the last couple of years. It would hand over the formality of getting on the ballot to St. Louis County Board of Elections.
And just to give credit, it was actually Officer Olson.
Okay.
Yes.
Make sure, thank you.
One question for clarification. It says here, can be adopted, maybe for one election or multiple elections? So are we, have we decided what?
No, we're, what we're bringing to you is only annual, just, just this year.
So just to be clear, this takes away the fun of getting in the parking lot at five a.m. to here. You can just go up to the Board of Elections anytime of day.
What I would say is, at the beginning, what I don't, you have to, in terms of how they're going to handle it, although what I would say is five a.m., Ms. Andrews will tell you those are rookie numbers. And so, so, so as you see there on the first day, what they will do is a lottery, is how they will, will do that. So if you're there to, and sign up on that first day, they'll do a lottery. Yeah, so the, the early morning, the early morning, you call it craziness, the early morning arrivals is what I will call it, is, would not be something that we would have to deal with.
To be clear, you have to be there on the first day.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but that is not. A one-third. Oh, earlier.
One related point to that is we would have to change our stated policy that's on board docs concerning the ballot order. I'm sure there's other issues in that policy too, but it conflicts with what the current policy is.
We'll have to, maybe, we'll have to bring, you know, maybe our policy committee can, can work on that.
And I think, well, I think the MOU will, will change how the policy looks. So if we approve this MOU, then we can look at the policy and see how to change it. But also here it says there are three positions available for two, three-year terms. It will be three positions, three.
Correct.
Right, so it should be three instead of two?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, but I think this MOU will be, we, we looked at every year. Is it on an annual basis, Dr. Alrick? So we could change that height as well?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing no further questions, we will move to favor. All those in favor of approving entering into a cooperation agreement with St. Louis County Board of Elections Commission to conduct candidate, candidate filing as presented, raise your right hand and say aye. Okay, all those opposed, aye. Motion passes? I mean, was that, how many did you?
Mr. Board, go, you were in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Motion passes. You're, I'm sorry?
I raised my hand.
Motion passes.
Judy was talking over me.
Five-one, decide.
Five-one, yes, thank you, five-one.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to note, at our policy, policy committee can bring our policy forward. I need a motion in a second to approve the board committees as presented. Some move?
Seven.
Dr. Alrick?
All right, thank you once again. As a, as a follow-up to the work that we had in our work session the last time we were able to be together, we have brought to you the board-appointed committees, specifically with the four items that board policy prescribes for approval for the board. First is the purpose statement, then the resources that will be provided to the group, the term limits, and the, when the board can expect either a report to the board or a report to the superintendent that will be provided to the Board of Education. And that is for our eight calendar, oh, excuse me, our eight committees that we have identified for board approval. Ms. Andrews?
Do I get the motion second? Okay, so at this time, any questions? Or thoughts? Seeing none, okay. So all those in favor of approving the board committees as presented, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Next up, seven-point-oh-one is future events. Our next board meeting, which is November seventh, we will be at the Peating Theater because apparently this room will be under construction. So by then, will this room have, they will start, started?
They, they will be mobilizing that week, November fourth.
Okay.
And my, I think, excuse me, Mr. Romey, I think it would be, it would be good to explain what mobilizing means, means would be, would making sure that this area would be fenced off, that would not be accessible.
Fence area off, they'll start moving it open and they may start some of the gutting of the place. But work will be starting that week. And our people will start to take out all the technology this week and into next week so that we have everything out of this building so that they can be studied.
Okay, and then we will have on November eighth, stack development and no school for students. It is election day. Then on November twenty-first, we have a board meeting. Then on November twenty-third, no school for students. And then November twenty-fourth through twenty-fifth, the district offices will be closed for Thanksgiving. Board, please see the summary of the patron comments received at the September twenty-sixth meeting for your information. And seven-point-oh-three board candidate filing notice. The Kirkwood School District will accept declaration of candidacy from any person interested in running for a position on the school board in the April fourth, two-thousand-and-twenty-three election. Filing will begin on December sixth, two-thousand-and-twenty-two, at eight a.m. I guess the Board of Elections is open at eight a.m.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and will end December twenty-seventh, two-thousand-and-twenty-two. There are three positions available for
Three, as Mrs. Bernardi pointed out, I'll correct that.
For three-year terms.
Yes.
Governor Mike Parson signed House Bill two-seventy-one into law in June of two-thousand-and-twenty-one. A part of HB two-seventy-one amends one-point-one, or one-one-five-point-one-two-seven, which changed the dates for candidate filing in local elections. Candidates filing will open one week earlier and close three weeks earlier than previous elections. Candidates filing for the April fourth, two-thousand-and-twenty-three general municipal election. It will be important for the public to note that, as the board just passed, filing will take place at St. Louis Board of Elections. And we will, I would assume, communicate that out in multiple ways.